This is public hearing and welcome everyone today. This is the first public hearing of the committee's inquiry into the Social Services Legislation Amendment, Cashless Debit Card Trial Expansion Bill 2018. I thank everyone who has made a submission to this inquiry. This is a public hearing and a Hansard transcript of the proceedings is being made. The audio and video of this public hearing is also being broadcast via the internet. Before the committee starts taking evidence, I remind all present here today that in giving evidence to the committee, witnesses are protected by parliamentary privilege. It is unlawful for anyone to threaten or disadvantage a witness on account of evidence given to the committee and such action may be treated by the senator as a contempt. It is also a contempt to give false or misleading evidence to the committee. The committee prefers all evidence to be given in public, but under Senate Resolutions, witnesses have the right to request to be heard in private session. It is important that witnesses give the committee notice if they intend to give evidence in private. If you are a witness today and you intend to request to give evidence in private, please speak to the secretariat staff. Throughout today's hearing, the committee will be telecommuting via televideo link. I am advised that this is a first for a Senate committee, so I thank everyone for their patience. We've already seen a few hiccups as we trial this new approach. Can everyone please check their mobile phones? So we commence today and I welcome via teleconference Ms Catherine Wilks from the Say No to the Cashless Welfare Card Australia, Mr Peter Feerick, and please correct me if I'm getting anyone's name incorrect, and Ms Crystal Silk. I am Senator Slade Brockman, Chair of the Committee. I have with me the Deputy Chair, Senator Rachel Seaworth, and Senators Pratt and Lyons, and I believe Senator Bartlett is on the phone.
Yes.
Great. For the Hansard record, would each of the witnesses please state their full names and the capacity in which you appear today? Could we commence with you, please, Ms Wilks?
My name is Catherine Wilks and I represent the Say No to the Cashless Welfare Debit Card Australia and the Low Cashless Debit Card Hinckley Region.
Thank you.
My name is Feerick. I was submitted to the submission, to the inquiry and I'm also an individual who will be affected by the card.
My name's Crystal Silk. I am here to talk on behalf of the people who will be affected by the card as well myself am a centric recipient and will be affected by the card.
And could you all please confirm that information on parliamentary privilege and the protection of witnesses and evidence has been provided to you?
Yes.
Yes. We also have another witness here at Bundaberg. Name's Annette Mason and I represent the Bundabergan District Community Centre. I'm the Coordinator of the NILS Programme at Bundaberg. That's for the No Interest Loan Scheme. So this will affect our clients as well.
I'll just check, we weren't, you're present, sorry, could I just get your name again?
My name's Annette Mason.
Annette Mason?
Yep.
And I'll just check with the committee, we usually need to have witnesses. Oh. Oh, okay. All right, we're happy to hear from her now. Yeah, we'll just, we'll just give a little bit of extra time here. Okay. Now, I will ask you all to make an opening statement if you wish. However, I will caution you to try and keep your opening statements as brief as possible. We do have five senators who do wish to ask you questions, so if we can keep it very quick. We do have a submission from Say No to the Cashless Welfare Card Australia. So please, we'll start with you, Ms Wilks, and if you would like to make some brief opening remarks and then we will go to questions. So, Ms Wilks.
Thank you. We're still sitting in a situation where there's been basically still no public consultation from the local member, which it just is coming across as everybody's being ignored now. But one of the problems that we've got is the cost regarding due. We feel that the money that's going to be given to Indu to run the program should be directed back to on-ground services. All services, mental health, disability, sports, drug, alcohol, gambling, housing, homelessness services, DV shelters, et cetera. You know, we feel that, you know, the government should invest in the community and the people and not so much in the private company. Because I can't see where investing in the private company is going to be beneficial for the community that's going to be stifled by this. So, we've got a bit of a query because under the Social Security Act, Guide to Social Security Law Version 1.241, February 218, 8.43, Protection of Payment, once a social security payment is paid into a recipient's personal bank account, it is no longer a social security payment and it becomes that person's funds. However, the problem with the Indu card, and it's a big elephant in the room that seems to be being ignored or dismissed or overlooked, is that subject to legislative instrument, Indu actually circumvents the recipient's rights and entitlements so that the payments never become the recipient's and Indu takes ownership of those funds, leaving the recipient basically a pauper. We've heard from people in Kauruguli that are not on the card but their partner is and as a result, they are now cut out of the banking sector in regards to taking a loan or something like that because the 20% is their only fiscal income and the Indu money is not considered their income by the banks. So people will not be able to partake in lending practices and banking practices normally like any other citizen is free to do so. And that is discriminating, absolutely, to cut off such a large portion of our population overall if this was to expand across the board. You know, and I think it needs to be investigated and looked into because why should a private company be granted, just given, 80% of our social security payments? What's the end game of this? Why isn't the government keeping control of that money? One of the biggest issues we've got in our region is media manipulation and sensationalisation. The big broad headlines in our newspapers, the media attack has been relentless the last three months. Headlines such as welfare migrants as people move from Bundaberg, Harvey Bay, and trying to get out of the region. And we had the Chamber of Commerce in Maryborough bleating about welfare migrants coming to Maryborough. It's like, what's the matter? Is social security money no longer valid currency? Isn't it good enough for the shops in Maryborough? It was just a derogatory way it's being used. Bludges and crackdown on bludges. We are absolutely sick to death of the media stigmatisation of people on social security, whether it be youth allowance, parenting payments, disability, old age even. I mean, even the pensioners are copying it now. But one of the most disgusting things that came out recently was we have a little town here called Howard and it's only got about 1,078 local people. And a certain community centre leader was standing up and basically branded that whole town's kids as welfare kids, which I find extremely offensive because the stigma that's going to be attached to this card will pass down to the next generation. And my attitude is welfare kids? I mean, where are we going with this? I saw a submission that described Aboriginal people as coloured people. This other language is going too far. And the youth group, I mean, to say that kids are coming in hungry. Well, kids come home from school, they come flying through the door, straight to the fridge. "I'm hungry mum", that's common at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, 3.30 in the afternoon. I don't know any kid that's not done it. So you've got kids coming out of school, going to the youth club at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. Of course they're going to be hungry because they haven't been able to go home and get snack first and the youth club doesn't finish till 5pm. You know, so some of the statements that are being used in the way that went across, that covered not only a front page but another full page and a video. So really ran that through. I had people ringing me from Howard that were absolutely disgusted that this person has stood up and spoken on behalf of their community without their consent and branded their whole little town, which is a lovely little town, as some places, a rotten place, you know, and branded their kids welfare kids. So I did include that in my summary along, you know, my submission with the video and a message I want to get out there is our kids are Aussie kids, not welfare kids. And I grew up in an inclusive Australia that didn't brand people as such and this card, we've already seen it, the video evidence is there from Kauruguli, from their public meetings of how people are already being treated with it. And we've known from Seduna and Kanarara, it's absolutely degrading. But, and it shouldn't go ahead, that's my opinion, that's that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else have some brief opening remarks?
Yes, Crystal Silk here. I have many reasons why I'm against the trial of the cashless card for my region and for myself as I am 31 and fall within the trigger payment. Some reasons are, I will not be able to pay my car finance with the 80% that's quarantined on the CDC as mine, like many other car finance accounts, only accept the minimum required payment via direct debit, which Indu, the company looking after the CDC, currently do not accept any direct debit as per their terms and conditions. In a region where used car lots advertise finance for settling recipients, I believe I won't be the only one with this issue. As a person who budgets every dollar I spend, I, as many others in the community, need cash to make ends meet so we can shop online on Gumtree or Facebook, buy froths, sell sites, at garage sales on the weekend, at markets, at cash fairs and family events. And let's not forget those roadside huts that farmers put their fresh fruit and veg in for a fraction of the supermarket prices. We still have many of those huts and stores on the sides of our road in our region where you pay the correct cash money into a lockbox or tin that a farmer will collect at the end of the day and you take your fresh produce that you bought. It works on trust, cash and community support. If you take away this 80% portion of the cash to roughly 6,007 people in Hinckley, what might happen to our farmers, our market store holders or people in emergency who just can't afford a brand new fridge or washing machine and do not have access to enough of their payment to buy a second-hand one for cash? I have heard many news reports in papers from CDC areas where the card is declining even for supermarket purchases when there is money in their accounts. It makes me feel like we are some sort of test lab rats based on a system of what if it worked? When it can't be proven after a few years of trials already in current trial sites. Also, how is a card going to help create jobs when even a lady who worked for a government job agency in our region stated on the news that there are not enough jobs and for one entry level job, for example, that she had around 400 applications for that one job? Lastly, the children that have many school fundraisers that are cash, tuck shops, sports events, even parents need to buy second-hand uniforms or second-hand school supplies to make ends meet to provide everything and anything for that child that they require. Kids in our area are already being labelled welfare kids by higher community members for going to breakfast club at school or by simply saying "I'm hungry" after an active day at school, which I know I did as a child, even though I was well fed. We are being branded and shamed as bad parents who are dull bludges and do not feed our children when those statements are far from the truth for a huge majority of parents on social security. What about our teens, fresh out of year 12 and have the world in the palm of their hands with the belief that they can achieve anything they set their minds to? But just can't get straight into a job or a university or a trade or an apprenticeship and need that assistance to help while they achieve that? Why would you want to give them a card that comes with the label "dull bludger" or "welfare abuser" as is stated in our media? I believe it will tarnish their mental health in the area that needs more mental health services. Our children are our future, doctors, lawyers, paramedics and even our future politicians. They need a boost up, not to be brought down by income management and the CDC. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Feerick?
Yes. I'll partly abbreviate what I was going to say because I know that time is short. So, as I've indicated in my submission, I'm somebody who's in the target group. I'm under 36 years of age and I'm currently on a centric payment. However, I don't have any of the problem issues that this card is said to address. I don't smoke, I don't gamble, I don't drink alcohol, I don't tackle illicit drugs, I don't take any drugs at all. But, okay, so our local federal member Keith Pitt, he didn't make any attempt to contact me nor anyone else that I know in the target group to find out what my views were on the card as someone who is directly affected. I live in a multi-generational household. My grandfather received a letter from Keith which explains that he would not be put on the card as he's an age pensioner. On the back, there's a question there which asks if he or against the card. However, I didn't receive this. Instead, both myself and my mother received a joint letter which spoke about the card in glowing terms and we only had the option of expressing support for the card via an online petition. How are we expected to make an informed decision on such a policy as this based on merely the information provided and the one letter by somebody who is in favour of the card? Why, again, why was I not given the opportunity to say that I do not support it? Why was my mother not provided the opportunity? A copy of the letter was actually provided at the previous inquiry and can be provided again if needed as evidence. I am studying law through the Loughborough University and I'm nearly finished now. But as part of constitutional law, and about the basic tenets of representational government such as accountability, transparency, responsibility, why is it that individuals acting on behalf of the executive and the legislative arms of the government are not ensuring that everything is above board in relation to the cashless debit card? Why has there not been a single public consultation held by our local federal representative when members of the public, as well as the service providers and the community leaders, can actually discuss in an open and robust fashion issues that affect our region, determine as a community, how to deal with these issues? Why are we not working from a position of knowledge rather than merely going, "This seems like a good idea, we need to do something, we just need to do something, doesn't matter if it works or it doesn't work, we'll find that out later"? I believe Keith Pitt actually said that in Parliament at one point. That "We will try this and we'll find out later if this works". There are also a lot of preconceptions or misconceptions from people who are in favour of the card. And I've seen this both talking with members of the public and reading a lot of submissions to the inquiry, both this and the prior one last year. A lot of people will say, "Oh, this is a good idea, it'll feed starving children", or "It'll fix obesity" or "It'll fix the people that waste their money on sugar drinks or baseball, smoke or tattoos". But the thing is, it's not going to address any of those things. It has been introduced saying that it'll fix intergenerational welfare dependence, it'll fix gambling addiction, corrupt illegal alcohol. But how does it do any of these? By taking away people's agency, it's taking away their ability to use their money to the best of their abilities. One positive outcome does not outweigh a five negative. So it's going to make people's lives a lot harder and yes, it may work for one, two, for three people, but everyone else in the target group is going to be impacted by this. I'll just finish off just saying that the end does not justify the mean. This has been proven time again through history and it's going to happen again now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms Mason, did you have any opening comments?
Just, I'm... I don't know much about the cashless debit card, but I do have some questions. Running, being the coordinator of the NILS Programme, we rely on people's bank statements to verify their spending habits. We're just wondering if Indu will provide statements to us to show what the spending patterns are of our clients for the NILS Act process. Being out of the banking system, it's, I think it's necessary to have that information from somewhere else. I can see it as being very discriminatory identifying the person as a benefit receiver. And I also have a question about the 20%. Is that 20% cash of their total benefit? Or is that after CentrePay deductions come out of their amounts? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to questions now because we are very short of time. So, Senator... Senator Pratt?
Thank you Chair, and thank you for giving evidence this morning. It's very helpful to have such direct, personal views about the card. I'm particularly interested in some of the comments you've made about direct debits and NILS loans and the need for cash within the local community. Can I ask, you, as you understand it, are not allowed to use the cashless debit card for direct debits? If it's 20% of the income that's left, are you suggesting that people who do have personal loans for things like cars or anything else would not be able to afford the repayments on that after, out of the remaining cash that's allowed to go through to the bank account?
Crystal Silk here. So I've been in contact with places like CentrePay to find out about direct debit when it comes to my car finance and when it comes to how to make payments and been in contact with Indu themselves. Now, my contracts, like most people's contracts with finance companies, make sure that the minimum requirement payment has to come from a bank account to ensure that they will get that money and to ensure that they can have that. Now, if I use my 20%, which it'll take up all my 20% to pay my car finance, that means I won't be able to buy second-hand uniforms or I won't be able to go to the markets where I have a very strict budget. I have a certain amount on market fruit and veg, I have a certain amount that I have to put aside for bills and things like that. And if this takes out of that cash component, I'm then going to be having to go to supermarkets where, yes, I'll be paying more, which means I have less of a budget, which means potentially I could be taking that out of my child's mouth. Because Indu have stated that currently they do not accept any direct debit. Either they will pay the bill for you, which my finance company does not accept, or you have to take it out of your 20% cash portion, which also takes out of the pockets of your children. Thank you.
Thank you for taking me through the detail of that. I know it seems obvious that with only a 20% cash component that those things are impossible, but it's very important to get it on the record because we haven't had, frankly, many people that have been prepared to speak directly about how this impacts on their household budget. And as you can understand, as you've all highlighted, that's because of the stigma attached to being forced onto this card. Can I ask in relation to the NILS loans, in terms of being able to see what people's spending habits are? So the NILS loan process, and I'm not in favour of the card, but I'm just trying to pick through it in terms of what the government and others are likely to say, are they going, simply going to say that, assume that all spending that takes place on the cashless welfare card is good spending? And why would you not be able to assume that in making an assessment?
Could I get my former coordinator to answer that question?
Good morning, my name's Patty Webb. I've just resigned as the coordinator of the NILS Programme. When we look at whether or not a person can afford a NILS loan, which is only a matter of $1,500 for essential furniture items like fridges, washing machines, beds, et cetera, we look at their spending habits. Currently, what we do is go through their bank statements to see where their budget sits and whether or not they're able to afford to be able to repay the payment, which of course comes out as CentrePay. Our concern with this, with the Indu card is whether or not we are able to get a list of transactions or a statement which will replace that information that is previously being used to give us a correct, a correct idea of what the person's budget is and whether or not they can afford to go through the loan and purchase the item. We also give the person a copy of the budget. Another concern is, pardon me, my voice is going on me. Another concern is whether or not the CentrePay is going to be a recurring pay which is allowed prior to that, that amount. I'm getting lost now, the voice is going. Yeah, whether or not it's going to be one of the recurring payments that is mentioned on the fact sheets for Indu, which we can take into account for the actual granting or not of the loan.
Could you clarify, could you clarify that? I don't, I don't know what you mean about return pay. Do you mean on the, of the list of payments that are eligible for CentrePay? What were previously eligible for CentrePay? Whether they'll be eligible under the Indu process?
Yes.
Is that what you mean? Yeah, okay.
I've actually got a fact sheet that I downloaded this morning and it says, "Where can the cashless debit card be used?" It can be used in any store that accepts FPOS nationwide to shop at an approved online store. It can be used to pay bills and make recurring payments such as rent and mortgage. Now, they've highlighted rent and mortgage. What about the other loan repayments? And as the young lady said before, what about her car payments? There is a concern here also that they, Indu, won't allow any third party on our loan process for any arrangements.
Credit arrangement.
Arrangement.
We are running significantly behind time. I understand it was technical problems, but Senator Bartlett, did you have any questions?
No, in view of the time, I'll let things keep on.
Thank you. Senator Lyons?
A number of you commented on the fact that your local federal member hadn't consulted with the community. Are you aware or can you tell us what consultations have occurred? So have government bureaucrats been to the town or what's been the consultation?
What consultation?
Yes.
The only consultation that was done was last year when the DSS came.
Just let us, sorry, just let us know who's speaking.
Sorry?
Let us know who's speaking.
Catherine Wilks. The only public consultation was done with the DSS and that wasn't a consultation. That ended up being, well, in Harvey Bay, 50 very angry people who couldn't get any answers, answered and being told, basically, "You'll just have to learn to live a different way". We, you know, and people questioned Indu cashless debit card terms and conditions. They were shut down.
So you're aware that DSS came once to Harvey Bay?
Yes, and they came once to Bundaberg.
Okay.
This is Peter, part of the department as well. Now, the DSS, as part of their submission, will say that there've been at least 120, I lost track of what the actual number, consultations. Now, the thing is, these are all individual consultations, one-on-one sessions with either the federal member or with representatives from the Department of Social Services. Now, the actual sessions that they actually held that were public were two information sessions and this is how they were marketed. They were marketed as information sessions. These were sessions run by DSS representatives telling people, "This is how the card will work". I believe there was a third session held in Childers, but that was only open to Childers or ISISI residents. And I think that was actually predominantly held to inform members of the business and the Chamber of Commerce. So, and there was also a fee of $20 to even enter. So I don't think anyone in their right mind could ever say that that was actually a public consultation.
Are you saying you had to pay $20 to go?
There was a $20 admission or a $20 breakfast attached to it.
Okay.
Yes.
So, those three information centres, your sessions, so Bundaberg, Harvey Bay... Those three information sessions, your sessions, so Bundaberg, Harvey Bay, Harvey Bay, and Childers?
This is Catherine Wood here. The Childers one was a Chamber of Commerce meeting, I think it was at six AM in the morning, which is not a normal time for when the public could attend, anyway.
No, no.
And the Bundaberg one was timed for, hang on, school pickup, right? So, you had the situation where parents couldn't attend because they were picking their kids up from school. And the one in Harvey Bay was at a lunchtime session, I believe. I think it was, yeah.
Right, and that had about fifty people at it?
The Harvey Bay one had about fifty people in it. They divided us up into three little table groups, and it was like a big sell, and we were being told, you know, it was like a marketing thing, and if you questioned anything, you couldn't get any answers, you were just, you were told, this is how it's going to be.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And that was the flavour of the other ones as well, where it was an information session, and very hard to get.
This is Peter. Yes, that was definitely the case of Bundaberg, and the same format. Everyone was split up, you had three groups, and when people spoke afterwards about what each group had spoken about, there was actually conflicting information, so there was a lot of confusion at the end of the day as to certain points about the cashless card.
Do you mind, because we're short on time, would you mind just sending the committee a very short email just outlining your, that consultation as you've just described it?
Yes, yes, you're fine.
I'll be very quick, because I know we're running out of time. We've run out of time. Ms. Bell, you gave a very articulate explanation of what, the types of circumstances that you use cash in. Could you give us a quick rundown, and maybe take this on notice? If you've worked out what percentage of your income do you spend in that way, in terms of being able to access the school uniforms, you know, I can imagine, school books, all those sorts of things? What percentage of your income would you spend in that way in order to maximise your, you know, how your budget?
Well, okay, so, percentage of my payment, so if we do it in fortnightly, which is how I do my budget, I've got my two weeks' rent, I've got my car finance, I've got, I put another fifty dollars away for registration, I save up through the year, and also emergency electricity bills that just pop up. The rest I use, I'd say a little bit in the supermarket, but the rest would be cash, so I would say almost two hundred dollars a fortnight just on fresh fruit and vegetables. And then you've got to have that little bit of savings in case a fridge or a...
Washing machine.
A washing machine breaks down, you know, or a microwave. I have kids, I don't have, like, I don't have expendable things, everything is for them, so my cash component goes to the markets where they like to go, because every so often a farmer might give you a free apple or a free banana with your purchases. And so, a large portion goes to them, because I believe it needs to go into our farmers and into our community to make this, this economy that we do have here in Bundaberg survive.
So, can I just do something? So, in other words, being able to access cash for the way you stretch out your budget is really important?
Absolutely. I budget down to every dollar. I make sure I have a weekly plan, I have a fortnightly plan, I have a monthly plan, and then I have a yearly plan for my bills. Most centrelink recipients that you receive, when they have such a little cash amount or a little payment, they are the best budgeters in the world, because we need to be able to survive not just weekly, monthly, we need to have bills yearly, especially when we have things like cars and rent and bigger bills, and electricity just keeps going up, so we have to budget. Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much. We will have to move on, but we thank you all very much for your participation. For those who do want to get further information to the committee, we will need that information by this coming Thursday, the ninth. So, but we will have to move on to our next set of witnesses, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're moving on to the regional councils, Chamber of Commerce, and community service organisation, but we will have to connect the phone calls through, so it will take a few minutes.
So, how will we know when they're on? Safety over here.
I believe Mr. Beer is on the line yet, but we will get started.
Yes, I've just joined.
I welcome via teleconference representatives from Frasercoast Regional...
Hi, this is Steve.
Bundaberg and District Chamber of Commerce, and we will hopefully be joined by Impact Community Services.
Oh, he's there.
Welcome, Brockman, Chair of the Committee. I have with me the Deputy Chair, Senator Seawat, Senator Pratt, Senator Lyons, and on teleconference, Senator Bartlett. For the handside record, could you please state your full names and the capacity in which you appear today? Please go first, Mr. Seymour.
George Seymour, Mayor of the Frasercoast Regional Council, but I make this submission in my own capacity. We don't, the council doesn't have a formal position on it, it being a controversial federal government issue.
Are you able to hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay. Um, yeah, so, my name is George Seymour, I'm the Mayor of the Frasercoast Regional Council, but I make this more in a personal capacity. The council does not have a formal position on this issue, it being a controversial federal government issue.
Okay.
My own views I'm speaking on today.
So, sorry, who was that?
George Seymour.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Mr. Sayer, could you introduce yourself in the capacity in which you appear?
Certainly. So, my name is Tim Sayer, I'm the Vice President of the Bundaberg Chamber, sorry, Vice President of the Bundaberg and District Chamber of Commerce.
And do we have Mr. Beer on the line?
Yes, you do.
Ah, brilliant.
Yes, Steve Beer, representing Impact Community Services, a community-based, not-for-profit organisation in Bundaberg.
Great. Can you please all confirm that you have information on parliamentary privilege and the protection of witnesses and evidence?
Yes.
Yes, confirm.
Before I, so we've done that. Now, I'll invite you to all make a very brief opening statement. We have a submission from Mr. Seymour. If possible, could you please keep your opening statement as brief as possible? We do have limited time this morning, and we do have five senators who are keen to ask you questions. So, Mr. Seymour, would you like to go first?
Yeah, and again, I just want to reiterate, this isn't a formal council position, we haven't taken a formal view. My view, having worked in the community services sector and representing my community, is that this bill and the policy underpinning it goes against what we're trying to do for our community, that being to care for it and to help people by empowering them and lifting them up. My view is that this bill doesn't make a lot of sense for our community. I can't understand how we were chosen out of the whole country, I can't understand why the age demographic was chosen, and I can't understand how people could think this could lead to reduced unemployment. In our, in Harvey Bay, we have a lot of volunteer community services trying to address disadvantage, and they do it by respecting people, they do it by respecting them as humans and community members. So, for example, at the Harvey Bay Neighborhood Centre, Comfort Kitchen provides free dinner, and they do it as a sit-down restaurant-style atmosphere, not a soup kitchen. The church groups that provide breakfast for homeless people on the esplanade, they do it like a barbecue where they can have a chat, they don't do it in a manner like this bill, which takes away people's personal autonomy and humiliates them. That's why I'm against this bill. I think this bill will lead to a black economy in my community, I think it could lead to an increase in crime, but most of all, I think it'll humiliate people in my community and segregate them. I grew up in an area in the US where when I went to school, we had lunch tickets. The people who got, who were on social security, they had blue tickets, and other children had green tickets. So, I've seen disadvantage. I also grew up in apartheid South Africa, I've seen disadvantage, and I really, I don't understand why this is being brought to my community.
Thank you. Mr. Sayer?
Yeah, thank you very much. So, the Bundaberg Chamber of Commerce is supportive of the cashless debit card, given its trials within the Hinkler elected. It's the chamber's opinion that introduction of the cashless debit card will be beneficial for our local businesses in the community, particularly those retailers and food and essential items. Businesses such as our local IPA and corner stores, those selling food, groceries, and everyday essential items, these businesses will benefit from increased local spend. Our local butchers, hairdressers, and school uniform shops, we believe will see an upswing in trade as people's spending habits change and improve. Even places like the hotels or clubs will continue to operate, as the biz area simply require a different merchant number to separate purchasing of food services from alcohol and gambling. Like all Australians, the cashless debit card still gives people an opportunity to go out and have a meal at a venue that provides good food at a good price, should the family budget allow it. From what we've seen proposed, the chamber also believes the cashless debit card will encourage people currently on welfare payments to make better choices with their finances, plus give them the incentive to rejoin the workforce. These ongoing and essential support programmes, designed to help people get back on their feet, must be funded and supported as part of the programme. The chamber also believes that retailers in the Bundaberg area are accepting of the card for payment, as they would be with any other form of payment. Utilising the cashless card guarantees payment for the business if the money is in the person's account, like any other debit card. In conclusion, when looking at mainstream businesses within the Bundaberg region, the chamber cannot see any adverse reaction for our local businesses. Thank you.
Beer? Mr. Beer, did you have an opening statement?
Yes, I certainly do. So, having worked for Impact Community Services for twenty-nine years, Impact Community Services being a not-for-profit, community-based organisation that supports marginalised people in our community, we've been able to run some consultation sessions with the department to help educate those people that will be affected by the cashless card. And overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly, what's happened is that people have been misinformed, and once they've got the information about what the card is and what the card is not, what it looks like, how it operates, how it works, et cetera. Whilst those younger people came into those sessions with some fairly negative points of view and some great questions, most of them left thinking that it was a, it was a fairly good thing to actually proceed with. In fact, we had one young, single mother that was on a disability support pension that actually wanted to opt-in if it is introduced to the Bundaberg region. So, I think that whilst it might solve all of our issues and all the rest of it, I think it's a step in the right direction to help people better manage their lives and, yeah, lead a more productive life in the community.
Great. Thank you all very much for keeping that brief. Senator Bartlett, did you want to kick off?
Look, I'd rather wait, let you folks go first, Kelly.
Okay, then. Senator Seawat?
Can I start with you? Have you spoken to anybody that's affected by the card in Cagouls?
Sorry, who was that directed to?
Mr. Beer.
No, I haven't.
Do you think it would be useful to talk to people that are already on the card to find out what their experiences are? Have you read any of the information that's online, where people are talking about the impact on their lives of using the card?
Yes, I certainly have done a lot of reading on it, and there seems to be for and against, that's for sure.
Thank you. Have you read of people's talk of feeling shame and humiliation and the card not working?
I have read some instances where that has happened, but then I've also read some really good news stories too, where people's lives have been enhanced and actually, they're better off now.
So, can I ask you, ask you a question following on from there? Why, this is a compulsory requirement, you said that you heard from a young woman who said, you know, she would like to opt-in.
Yes.
Have you considered the issue about making something like this voluntary? So, if people wanted to do it, they could? Rather than forcing people to?
That could be a possibility, provided that people are really well-informed. I think there's a lot of people in the community that are ill-informed about what the card is.
Senator Lyons?
Mr. Beer, given we've got limited time, can you quickly outline or send to us on notice the number of consultations you did where and how many people?
Certainly.
And just so that we know now, of the consultations you held, how many people attended in total?
Sure.
Can you give us an outline now?
I don't have that information in front of me, but I know that in the first consultation there was around twenty-five people that attended. twenty-five people that attended, the second consultation, there was about twelve people that attended, and these were people that come from a range of, of, um, areas within the community and services that we have here at Impact. So, there were some young mums, there were some disadvantaged youth, there were some job seekers, um, from transitions to work, et cetera. And then there's been another couple of sessions, um, I think there's April, May and June there were sessions, those numbers were smaller, um, being around six to ten people at each session.
And did the, um, did DSS pay you to hold these consultations?
No, not at all.
But how did you and DSS arrive at doing them, did they ask you?
Actually, there was a community consultation that was from, presented from DSS, and that was from a range of community members though too, that was from other support organisations in town, some of the churches and, and, um, people from industry attended that. Um, and we simply provided a venue for them to hold that consultation, um, and out of that, um, yeah, they wanted to know whether anybody from that meeting could gather a group of younger, you know, that demographic that would be affected by the card, for them to, um, provide some information around what the card is.
Okay, so the decision to apply the card to those under thirty-six was, was already a pre-made decision, was it? So, DSS came to town with that view?
Look, I, I wouldn't be able to confirm that, that was, that was last year, I think, that, those initial sessions?
Okay, so you don't know where the-
Yeah, I just can't recall.
Okay, so you don't know where the, where the age of thirty-six came from?
No.
But you just went along with it? You just went along with that, you didn't question it?
Um, yeah, fairly well.
Because it doesn't apply, the, the fact is, it doesn't apply anywhere else, this is the first time we've come with an age.
Yes.
So, you don't have a view on that?
(sigh) I suppose, knowing our demographics in Bundaberg and, um, the Fraser Coast, there certainly is a very high, uh, youth unemployment rate, um, but going up to that thirty-six age bracket, I'm not sure why that is actually in place, no.
Okay, thank you, and just very quickly, Mr. Sayer, um, you talked about the impact for business, but the card isn't for business, it's for people on, uh, a government benefit. So, do you have any, um, information or analysis on, um, how or whether it will improve people's lives?
Uh, Senator, I'm, uh, representing the chamber, um, we're looking at it from the point of view of, um, how it will affect business. Um, that's, that's where we've, we've come from and looked at. Um, we're, we're not making any sort of commitment or stand on, on what impact that may have on individual people. Um, we are looking at our business community. The reason I make that statement is that, um, there's been information being circulated by various parties that, um, businesses may feel, um, disinclined to take the card. From what we've seen from surveying our members, that's not going to be the case. So, that's why I've made that statement, that we've made that statement.
And have you spoken to businesses in the goldfields?
Um, some of our members have, I personally haven't. Um, we have done extensive readings through the information that's available on both sides of the argument. Um, and we can see that, that there are businesses that have benefited from it, and there's the obvious cases where the businesses have, have faltered. Um, from what we can ascertain, some of those were due to the fact of, um, inappropriate business practices or unsustainable business practices. Um, we're focused on whether we think the change to people's habits would be good for our community. Um, with our current, uh, economic climate that we're experiencing here, anything that, that changes people's habits for the better will only be beneficial for our community.
So, what evidence do you have of, um, alcoholism or drug use or children going hungry? Because when I asked you initially, you said you didn't have any evidence, that you were really speaking from the business perspective, but now you've made a statement that it'll change the community. So, what evidence do you have that it will presumably, in your view, change the community for the good?
I meant our business community?
Okay, you meant the business community, all right.
No, okay, well, I thank you all very much, um, I'm not sure anyone took anything on notice there, but if you did, we will, oh, they did, oh, okay. So, yes, there was a question taken on notice, we will need a response by this coming Thursday, the ninth, on that. Um, but otherwise, we thank you very much for your time today. And we will move on, we'll move on to the next witness, we'll have a short break while we get her on the line.
where the card hopefully will be rolled out. My strong belief in the benefits to individuals, families and particularly children to be gained from the introduction of the cashless debit card has been formed by what I have personally seen. I've also had many conversations with residents of the Hinkler electorate who wholeheartedly support the card. I have been a volunteer at a community centre which runs a number of activities including markets, youth group and a lot of other things for the past seven years. There's been numerous public consultation meetings, surveys and mailouts in the electorate of Hinkler in the past fifteen months, which shows that seventy-five percent of residents are in favour of the introduction of this card in Hinkler. I've also had media coverage and am well known in this area as being a supporter of the card. A large majority of people have contacted me to say that they support what I have stated publicly. I've had a few dissenters who've used Facebook to attack me personally, but when I've checked these people out, I've found that almost all of them, they either don't live in the Hinkler electorate or they're using phony identities on Facebook. Some individuals that I've spoken to who are local have been quoting so-called facts, which are nothing more than misleading lies. These are people who have said, oh, this is not going to work, this card. Their opinion of the card changes dramatically when they do learn what the real facts are. The problem of welfare dependency and neglected children will not go away. Something has to be done and done quickly. The introduction of this card should not have been delayed this long, and I urge the Senate to stop wasting precious time and let the trial in Hinkler begin without any more delay. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Ms Whiffen, for keeping that very brief. Just to kick off from me, and we have only got a few minutes, we've actually contracted this segment slightly because the witness that was meant to be appearing with you actually appeared earlier in the day, so we will try and keep this to about fifteen minutes. Just in terms of some of the social problems that you finished up with there, could you just talk us through some of the issues that are present in Hinkler and that you believe could be addressed by the cashless debit card?
Well, I think one of the main things that stays in my mind is a family that used to live here and a young girl, and that young girl, lovely little girl, she used to come into the community centre where I volunteer very regularly saying that she hadn't had anything to eat. I live in a very small town, so everything's right in your face, and that little girl was grey. I don't know if you've ever seen a grey eleven-year-old, but that little girl was grey. And her mother would be over at the hotel, I would see them, see the little girl hanging around outside the hotel trying to get something to eat. And then she'd come over and she'd be here, or she'd ask for money and I'd offer give her money to get something or give her some food. Where she lived was known locally as party central, it was booze and drugs. There was eleven kids in the family. That is, I tried, I tried and tried to get the appropriate children's services to intervene, and I didn't get anywhere. So, that's one thing. There's a lot of stories here, you see it all the time, you see the effects of the drugs and booze that are having on the kids. We also see people here that have no ambition in life at all, and their whole career choice is welfare. And it's just, it's just so sad, they have no idea what they're missing out on.
Senator Pratt?
Uh, Ms Whiffen, when you talk about people having no ambition whatsoever, do you think that when community members describe people in that way, that it actually deflates people of their any potential ambition because it creates an us and them attitude inside the community?
Um, well, we certainly do not practise that at the community centre where I'm involved. We do get work for the adult people. We never ever refer to them as work for the adult people, we refer to them as volunteers. We try to encourage them, we try to say to them, you know, here's some opportunities that you can have. We don't put really onerous tasks on them that we suggested and that they might like to have a bath, and that they might like to wear some deodorant, but that there are opportunities, and that we are quite happy to give them a reference at the end of their term. So, we do try to encourage them to, you know, to better their lives, and certainly not to discriminate against them.
Please, in terms of the services that you provide, do you provide financial counselling at all through the neighbourhood centre?
No, we do not, because we're not qualified to do that, but we do have a good relationship with United Care in Harvey Bay, and they are more than happy to come out here to provide budgeting and financial advice.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I ask, Ms Whiffen, have you read or had a look at the ANAO report, the Auditor General's report, on the cashless welfare card?
Some of it, I can't say I've read it in depth, but I have seen some of it.
Can I ask for your opinion on the comments around the lack of evidence to show that it works?
Okay, well, I have had conversations with other people who have been in those areas where the card has been introduced, and they have said to me that they have found the effect of the card to be incredibly positive.
Can I ask, have you read the final analysis of the Northern Territory intervention? Which showed that a low...
No.
Sorry? Okay. Which showed that people's perception that things were better were not actually, well, part of, you know, part of what those showed, showed that it meant none of its objectives, but that people's perceptions that things were better were not borne out by the evidence when it was compared, when the situations in those centres were compared to like situations elsewhere. So, just relying, in other words, just relying on the anecdotal evidence doesn't necessarily mean that it's actually working.
No, but I do believe that we have to have something that stops the drugs being able to be purchased and the booze being able to be purchased. Even though I am a smoker, I would like to see it extended to cigarettes as well, but we have to do something. And the kids, I see kids suffering all the time because the parents are allowed to buy booze and drugs.
Yeah, I don't, you know, like, I'm entirely on board with, we need to be addressing, and I don't, not pretending that there aren't issues that we need to address. What I'm looking for is what works, rather than wasting money again on things that don't work.
What we currently got really isn't working, but I mean, the auditor, remember, the Auditor General's report was released fairly recently, and I believe that further investigation is needed because all of the other statistics that I've seen have said that from, you know, people that live and have been in those communities, that the system is working particularly for families and a reduction of domestic violence and improvement in the child, in children's welfare and family involvement.
Okay, Senator Lyons.
Ms Whiffen, I'm just wondering, you talked about people having alcohol and drug issues. What are the services in your community to help people who choose to get off drugs and alcohol? Have you got services there?
We do have a local Alcoholics Anonymous, and we do have some visiting health professionals that come into our area, as I said, it's only a very small town, and we're, here at our community centre, we're actually looking at partnering with another community group in Harvey Bay to get even more services out here.
So, if people want to really tackle alcohol and drug issues and they need rehab services, where would they have to travel to and how far away is that?
Harvey Bay, thirty kilometres.
And what sort of services have they got?
Just about everything, I think, and I've got a little card here for Coast Community Contact. For women, men, youth, families and children, Indigenous, multicultural counselling, mental health community, alcohol, drugs, gambling, legal services, housing and online. It's a little, a little bit, a card that people can keep in their wallet that's got all of those numbers on it.
But people would have to travel thirty minutes to get there?
Yes, but this is what we're trying to bring out here as well, is more access to those services locally without people having to travel.
But the government, the government hasn't committed that, so it's rolling out the card, but it hasn't committed additional services?
It has committed additional funding to provide those services, it's my understanding of it, yes, they have, if the card comes in, the services will come here faster than what they would without the card.
What guarantees have you got that that will happen?
I have been told by the federal member that that will happen.
You've been told, but you don't have anything in writing?
Not to hand, no, but I'm sure I could get it if I asked for it.
Well, let's see if you can, Ms Whiffen, because it's been the experience of other communities that the wraparound services are not there, so that has been the experience.
Well, most of the small towns around here, there's, you know, anybody, if you talk to anybody, they'll tell you that there's not a lot of services, and for aged people either, it's a lot of aged people in this community that don't have a lot of services.
No, well then, we thank you very much for your time, Ms Whiffen, and we will have to move on to our next witness, but thank you very much.
I do appreciate you hearing me, and I can only think we can't please, there's a trial, how can it not be tried?
Okay, thank you, Ms Whiffen, we will have to move on.
Yeah.
And we'll now go to the Department of Social Services, where we get to trial our teleconference facilities, our video conference facilities. Oh, no, I can see them, they can see us. I want officers from the Department of Social Services, can you please confirm that information on parliamentary privilege and the protection of witnesses and evidence has been provided to you?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. I remind witnesses that the Senate has resolved that an officer of the Commonwealth or of the state shall not be asked to give opinions on matters of policy and shall be given reasonable opportunity to refer questions asked of an officer to superior officers or to a minister. This resolution privates only questions asking for opinions on matters of policy and does not preclude questions asking for explanations of policies or factual questions about when and how policies were adopted. For the hands side record, could you please state your full names and the capacity in which you appear today?
Hi, it's Liz Heffron Webb, Deputy Secretary, Families and Communities, Department of Social Services.
Selena Patrick, Branch Manager, Welfare Quarantining and Gambling.
Bruce Taloney, Group Manager of the Family and Communities Reform Group.
And Philip Brown, Branch Manager, Policy Strategy and Capability.
Great, the committee has your submission, and now would like to invite you to make an opening statement if you would like to, but then we will get on to asking you some questions.
Thank you, I'll just make a brief opening statement. I'd like to thank the committee for the opportunity to provide comments in addition to our submission on the Social Services Legislation Amendment Cashless Debit Card Trial Expanded Bill 2018. The cashless debit card aims to reduce the amount of welfare payments available to be spent on goods that contribute to harm such as alcohol, drugs and gambling, and in doing so reduce the violence and crime and other harmful behaviours that can devastate communities. The card operates like an ordinary debit card, except that it cannot be used to purchase alcohol or gambling products or to withdraw cash. Participants have eighty percent of their welfare payment placed on the card and the remaining twenty percent goes in their regular bank account. The cashless debit card is operating in Seduna, South Australia, and the East Kimberley, Western Australia, and has been since March and April 2016. Based on the positive feedback from the trial communities and interest from other communities, as well as the findings of the AREMA evaluation, the government committed to expand the programme to two new sites in the 2017-18 budget, the Goldfields region in Western Australia and the Bundaberg and Harvey Bay area in Queensland. Passage of legislation in February this year allowed the cashless debit card to be implemented in the Goldfields region only with legislative amendments required to expand to any new sites in the future. In March this year, the cashless debit card was implemented in the Goldfields region in Western Australia. The implementation progressed well and the department has received initial anecdotal reports that indicate early success, including comments from local shop owners noting increases in the sale of grocery items. The bill currently before Parliament is necessary for the cashless debit card to be extended to the Bundaberg and Harvey Bay area as the fourth trial site. The bill will increase the current participant numbers limitations from ten thousand to fifteen thousand, specify a new trial site of the Bundaberg and Harvey Bay area, specify the class of persons who will be trial participants in the new site, allow the option of establishing a community panel for the new site, allow the option for the secretary to make a determination to vary the restricted percentage in the new site in the event of unforeseen circumstances, clarify that merchants may implement product level blocking, including adding cash-like products as a restricted item, and specify the end date of the cashless debit card trial in Bundaberg and Harvey Bay as thirty June 2020. The Bundaberg and Harvey Bay area provides an opportunity for government to test the card's flexibility as a tool to support people in urban locations and to help address key social problems identified during consultation, in particular the high youth unemployment, intergenerational welfare dependence and high rates of drug and alcohol abuse and gambling use. I would also like to acknowledge the recent release by the Australian National Audit Office of its report on the implementation and performance of the cashless debit card trial, tabled on seventeen July 2018. The department agreed with the ANAO's recommendations and is actively working to ensure there are improvements to procedures and processes, including in relation to risk management, procurement and data collection. The department has implemented changes to improve the way it manages risks by ensuring mitigation strategies and treatments are regularly reviewed. It is also looking at its procedures and guidance material relating to its procurement practices and developing new approaches to data monitoring and evaluation. This is supported by the appointment of the new role of a chief evaluator within the department. On fifteenth of May 2018, the government also announced a second evaluation of the trial. The department will manage this evaluation, which will be informed by the ANAO audit and experience gained from the first evaluation. The department is currently in the process of putting out a tender to seek a provider to conduct this evaluation. This impact evaluation will build on the baseline data that is currently being collected in the Goldfields region. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to answering, asking some questions. I do have a few technical questions that we will put on notice, but we will need responses back by close of business Thursday, which is the night, so I'll get those through to you via email through the Secretariat, but we will go to Senator Pratt.
Chair, I note that the cashless debit card was raised by the Prime Minister during his visit to Tennant Creek this week. Can I ask the department, have discussions taken place with any organisations or groups in Tennant Creek about the cashless debit card?
There's been no formal planned discussions. The, I think the visit was last week that the Prime Minister and Ministers Scuyan and Tien were in Tennant Creek. Some of, my understanding is some local people may have raised it, but we've had no formal discussions or planned meetings about the cashless debit card in Tennant Creek to date. The, our Minister, Minister Tien indicated that there was some interest, and so we may go meet with local stakeholders to explore that.
So, in other words, you are initiating discussions with stakeholders in Tennant Creek?
That was the commitment that Minister Tien made, that in response to it being raised with him, we would have some discussions and test what the community's views were, and whether that was one of the tools that they were interested in to tackle the issues that are occurring in Tennant Creek.
Has anyone from the Northern Territory approached you seeking information about the debit card's implementation and the outcomes in Seduna and Kalguli?
Can I ask you to repeat the first part of that question, sorry, the sound dropped out?
Has anyone in the Northern Territory approached you seeking information about the rollout of the card and its implementation, in particular the outcomes in both Seduna and Kalguli and the East Kimberley?
Ms Patrick, do you have any knowledge of that?
We haven't had any direct contact from anyone in Tennant Creek or the Northern Territory. I believe that Minister Tien has had some discussions at the local level.
Okay. Have you made any assessment of the issues that have been raised in Seduna, Kalguli and the East Kimberley, and how they might translate into the circumstances of places like Tennant Creek?
Obviously, that's something that would feed into our advice and any policy deliberations. I might just add, the Department of Social Services does not have an on-the-ground presence in Tennant Creek, the Department of Prime Minister and Cabinet does, and it's possible some of their staff have had discussions about this. So, in terms of you asking whether anyone from the Northern Territory had approached the government, they may have approached a different part of the government. We can test that, see if we can get information for you by Thursday on whether it's been raised in the course of, there's been various community discussions going on in Tennant Creek for the last few months. In terms of if there were further deliberations about the implementation of the card in Tennant Creek, we would of course look at the situation there. They already have, as you're fully aware, the basics card operating there, so it would be implementing in a different context again, which would need to be part of the advice that we formulate for government.
Can I ask, the Auditor General's report into the rollout of the cashless debit card and its consideration of the welfare card, how you think those issues translate into the new community of Tennant Creek?
Again, the first part of your question dropped off, I'm really sorry. Was it about the ANAO report?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, sorry. So, the ANAO report would of course be one of the factors we would look at around, you know, were appropriate risks kind of monitored actively, did we have appropriate risk mitigation? That is something that we will very actively take into consideration in all future implementation arrangements.
You stated before that there are some conversations now happening in regards to the rollout of the cashless welfare card in Tennant Creek. So, who will be having those conversations with the community, and what information is currently being given to people in Tennant Creek about the cashless debit card?
So, as I said, there's been no formal consultations or conversations. It will have come up through the course of other work that's happening, including the formation in Tennant Creek of an elders' council that has been, I know, supported by the Department of Prime Minister and Cabinet to give advice to government on issues in Tennant Creek, what might be policy options, what tools they want to see. So, that's the only context in which it's been discussed. Obviously, it was raised with our minister, he's committed that if it's something people are interested in, we will come and give them information on it.
So, you're saying that if that elders' council asks for information, you will formally then initiate those conversations?
Yes.
But as such, that issue of the cashless debit card is not formally on the table with that council yet?
The minister has indicated that it was raised with him, so we are exploring whether, you know, what might be the appropriate way to take that forward, including going and providing further information and initiating further discussions.
Can you give us some context about the manner in which the issue was raised with him? Was it raised in terms of people wanting to see it rolled out, people inquiring whether it would be rolled out, or people being concerned it might be rolled out, or all of the above?
I don't have that information.
If you could take that on notice, that would be terrific, thank you.
I'll give the call to another.
Thanks very much. You said in evidence, in response to questions that Senator Pratt asked you, that the issues have been raised with Minister Tien, so can you provide a list of who the minister met with?
I will pass that request on to Minister Tien's office.
Thank you. I was recently in the Pilbara and at a couple of meetings where we were informed that government had had discussions about the rollout of the cashless debit card in the Pilbara. Can you detail to us who you've met with and where those discussions are up to and who is having those discussions?
We haven't had any recent discussions in the Pilbara. I will need to take on notice and get a list of people, but there's no ongoing discussions in the Pilbara at this stage.
Okay, can you provide to the committee a list of where else you're having discussions about the rollout of the CDC card? Whether they're recent or older meetings?
Yes.
Thank you. Just thinking about the ANOA report, was the department aware of the issues that the ANA report raised before it was published?
The process for an ANAO report means that we're usually kept reasonably well-informed of their findings as they proceed through the course of undertaking their work. So, the issue, where they highlighted issues to us, we took immediate steps to rectify those issues, so in terms of...
Perhaps I wasn't very clear. So, the ANOA report has highlighted a number of quite significant process-type issues, so, and I appreciate you saying that ANOA talks to you along the way, but were department staff raising with you or other officials these issues even before the ANOA report, even before ANOA came into the department?
I've been in this role for two and a half weeks, so I'm not in a position at this stage to indicate, I don't know whether any of my colleagues here have that background, but we can, we can take that on notice.
It's identified, you know, quite significant gaps in a system that presumably your departmental staff would have been aware of and hopefully did highlight, so I'd really want to know that part of it before the ANOA came in. All right, so my next question is, we recently did, my office did a consultation in Kalguli with people from the Goldfields who are affected by the card, and we did hear some horror stories. One issue which came up, and I think we have asked you this before, you've got a contractual arrangement with Indu to provide particular services?
Right.
I think we've asked for that in the past. Have you provided that in the past, either at estimates or at other committees, the documents?
Are you referring to the contract with, between... Are you referring to the contract with, between Indu and local service providers?
Well, no, I'm referring to the contract between DSS and Indu.
I would have to check on whether we're able to provide that because there would be commercial sensitivities.
I think we may have previously provided information about the price and the costs in the contract, but I don't believe we've provided the contract.
Okay, so if you look at that, so where DSS is making payments to Indu, when do you, does the contract specify how quickly that money is transferred? Or, because in Kalgoorlie, people told us that they are expecting money from DSS and DSS had told them the money had been paid, but it didn't show up on the Indu card.
Are you referring to just the welfare payment or a transfer?
Transfers.
So, the process for a transfer, should someone contact our hotline and need like an emergency transfer? The process does take a couple of hours for that, which is standard banking processes. So, we can either do a real-time gross settlement, which takes a couple of hours. The second option is a payment which does take around 48 hours to become available in someone's bank account.
So, what's that 48-hour process? Like, what would initiate that?
Again, that's just a standard banking transfer. Hence, the reason that it takes the 48 hours, which is the standard banking practice.
So, if you transferred money on a Friday, would you expect it to be available in someone's account on a Monday?
I would have to check in regards to whether that counts as business hours. So, it would depend on the timing of someone's payment and at what time of the day they requested that, as to what time it would hit someone else's bank account.
Yeah, so if, okay, I might put some questions on notice. So, the member for O'Connor, Rick Wilson, has an Indu card. How did he get that Indu card, given that he's not on a benefit?
So, members of the public are able to volunteer to become, to get an Indu card. So, that's how he went through that process of volunteering.
So, why then, in the Bundaberg Harvey Bay trial, have you specifically said people can't opt in?
That's a policy parameter that's been determined by the government. The goal is to test a number of different arrangements, so.
So, the opt-in provision doesn't apply elsewhere?
You can volunteer in other locations. You won't be able to in the Bundaberg Harvey Bay region.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow on there, could you provide, take on notice, the details of what it means when somebody opts in, when they've got their own salary? I don't want to go through it now because I've got other questions I really need to ask. But can you take that on notice? Is it their full salary? You know, just how it works?
Yes, we can, yep.
Thank you. Can I then go back to asking questions, and I'll need to put some on notice as well? The claim is often made that this is just like a normal debit card, the Indu card. When I was in Kalgoorlie, I heard of a number of examples where people have been trying to buy things online. They haven't been able to. They've had to go down in queue for a significant period of time at the Indu office. So, what is happening around, and how does the department explain the difficulty people are having buying things online with the card? And how is it normal for people to have to go into an office to ask to spend their money?
So, with online purchases, merchants aren't automatically switched on as they are in trial, in physical locations. We do have over 2,000 online merchants that are approved. Should a participant want to purchase something that they're unable to, that is not a restricted good, we are able to then add that website in a matter of hours so that the purchase can be made. Alternatively, we can also arrange a transfer.
Okay, so that's not the experience, lived experience? In terms of the transfer of money, is, do you mean the experience that you just went through with Senator Lyons?
Yes.
Okay, so that takes days. Again, how is this somebody using a card just like you would normally use it?
As I said, we are able to add websites and we do regularly go through a process of identifying sites, websites which may need to be moved to the approved list.
In terms of then, could you take me through the process of how the Indu offices are working? In each of the locations, there's an Indu office. That's correct, isn't it?
Indu contracts local organisations to provide that face-to-face service.
Okay, but each one has that centre? Okay, so where's it going to be in the wide, in the wide bay trial or the Hinckley trial?
We haven't yet established where those, what we call them, local partners would be. That's something that we would work through with the Community Reference Group around identifying who would best be placed to provide that service.
Okay, will there be one in each of the centres?
I would imagine so, but at this stage, as I said, because we haven't had that discussions, I can't guarantee that there would be one in each.
Okay, could you take on notice to provide an up-to-date list for the existing trials, who those partners are that are providing the service? Also, do you have a copy of the contract with those partners? And I'm, in this instance, particularly interested in the level of service that are provided at those centres. I'm told in Kalgoorlie, people have been waiting hours to get face-to-face, to, for face-to-face interaction. So, are there service agreements? Are there agreements around those sorts, the provision of service and how many hours, how many staff people will employ? All those issues, are they covered by a contract?
So, the contract is between Indu and the local organisation? We would be able to provide you details on what services those local partners provide, the hours of operation, if that's what you're after?
Yeah, that would be, that would be helpful. If you could provide that, that would be appreciated. Do you require Indu to require their service partners to meet certain quality standards of service?
I'd have to take that on notice. I'd have to check that with Indu.
Okay, that'd be appreciated. But if you could take on notice those other details that you've got. Can I ask about then, the issue that we were talking around about Niels and third-party transfers? Well, sorry, access to people's statements. I'm sure that you heard the evidence that we got this morning around the Niels process and the need to provide bank statements. And then the provision of those bank statements to our third parties and not being able to access them potentially for Niels loans, for example.
So, Senator, we didn't hear that direct evidence, although I think some people in the team did. So, was the nature of the issue about having trouble organising loan repayments via the card? Is that, was that the issue?
No, well, that is an issue, but this specific issue was about when they're providing Niels loans, they need to look at someone's expenditure history. So, they look at bank statements. And there's an issue about third parties accessing the bank statements from Indu.
I'd have to look into that one, sorry, Senator.
Okay, could you then take that on notice? And maybe look at the evidence to address the evidence. But the broader issue is the provision of that information to third parties?
It's been put to us that there's no access to statements for third parties. I can see online on the Indu app that it should be possible to download a statement. I would like to see what level of detail is available through such a statement to see if it would meet the requirements of Niels loan providers? And any other person from whom someone might be looking to get?
There's a conspiracy here.
We can hear you, we can't see you.
Are they going to ring his bank?
The smiling face of the chair. We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Oh, brilliant. Okay, so can, so can we go to, where I was going next is, the other issue that we heard was somebody's finance car repayments. Indu can't make the type, oh, sorry, the finance company for car, we've heard this as a direct example. Their finance company doesn't take payments the way Indu makes payments. So, in other words, they're not going to be able to make their payments from the money that's the 80%. Have you come across those issues? A, could you look at the evidence, take, and if you've got an answer now, that'd be great. If not, could you take that on notice?
So, are you referring to a direct debit? So, the car company can't take the direct debit from the? So, direct debits are able to be made using the card number. At this stage, you're unable to do direct debits using your bank account number. And so, for those circumstances, if a participant contacts the hotline, we will work in arranging to set a higher transfer limit to allow for the payment of that car payment.
So, would that then be able to happen as a once-off? Or do they need to contact the hotline?
No, we would be able to set that up regularly.
Could you just explain, sorry, that the higher limit? Is it, I'm not, I don't get the connection, I'm sorry, between the card number and the account number and the higher limit?
So, in recognising that not everything will be able to be paid using the card, such as, you know, if someone's paying rent, that won't accept a card payment or won't accept BPay or CentrePay, we are able to set a transfer limit for that person so they can transfer the funds out themselves?
Okay, right, sorry, I didn't realise that's where you were going. It was the direct transfer for somebody to be able to do it. Okay, thank you.
Could I just add quickly? So, that means if someone also has excess water and are paying their rent by cashless debit, they can't pay the water bill by that direct debit arrangement unless they talk to you?
So, you're able to do a direct debit with the card number, which most people are able to do. Should, for some reason, the electricity company not allow for a direct debit via the card number, they hopefully would be able to pay an alternative method such as CentrePay?
A water bill to the real estate agent that couldn't be done because there was a limit set. Well, not without calling.
All right, we do really need to wind up. Senator Bartlett, did you have any questions?
No, it's okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank all of our witnesses today. That concludes today's hearing. The committee is adjourned for this segment and we will recommence at 11:45 Eastern Time, 9:45 Western Time, for the Hearing into the Private Health Insurance Legislation Amendment Bill 2018 and related bills. I thank you all very much.